Manana Sizouls, good morning, everyone. We are resuming on second reading file. We are back on bill number 36-36 after recess yesterday. Assistant Majority Leader Shelton, you are recognized.
Sizouls Masi, Madam Speaker. I move that we pass on file bill number 36-36 as amended.
On the motion to pass on file temporarily, is there any objection? No objection, motion carries. We will resume again on bill, uh, second reading. Bill number 95-36 LS and Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I moved to place bill 95-36 COR as amended by the Committee on Air Transportation, Parks, Tourism, Higher Education, and the Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizens into the third reading file, and I ask that I may discuss the bill.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Bill number 95-36 LS as amended is an act to amend section 771 04.1 of Article 1, Chapter 77, Title 21 Guam Code annotated relative to including all peace officers in the enforcement of alcohol-free zones within the Guam territorial park system. The bill seeks to allow any peace officer as defined under Guam's Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission law to enforce the alcohol-free zones provisions and issue citations and fines to violations. According to the Department of Parks and Recreation, there are currently 14 parks designated as alcohol-free zones. One, the Adalube Governor's Complex, Fort Santa Agada, Angel Santos Park, Serena Bridge in Agania, Hagatia, Dog Strip Hagatia, West Agania Park, Padre Palomo Park, East Hagatia Park, to include Apotkin and Veterans Sunset, Chinese Park, Dedito Skate Park, Dedito Buffer Strip, and Li Guan Parks 1, 2, and 3. It's no secret, Madam Speaker, that Parks and Recs currently lacks the needed manpower to enforce these zones. We've seen in many of our public hearings addressing the parks that we only have two park patrol officers, and that's Officer Pedro Lozama and Officer Wakin Mesa who come to testify before our body often. And we know them by name despite their division's very small size. They work hard day in and day out to keep our parks and our communities safe. And as we continue to fight through the pandemic, our parks have really been an essential place for healing and well-being for the people of Guam. This is where our island life happens. We are barbecuing on the weekends, out for a morning jog or exercising in the early evenings. Our parks have continuously played an important role in our daily lives. And this has been especially true over the last year as people have felt the angst of staying indoors and wanting to go out and enjoy our recreational facilities. There has been an increase to our public parks. And however, due to this rise in activity, our community requires more human resources to monitor these areas and keep them safe. And that includes the ability to give citations when needed, when the rules of our parks are not being followed. Under the current law, officers of the Department of Parks and Recreation, Park Patrol Division, and the Guam Police Department are responsible for enforcing the alcohol-free zones in these parks. And we've already seen a collaboration with all of these different law enforcement agencies that this bill, bill 95, seeks to strengthen among our public safety partners. During the pandemic, different law enforcement agencies collaborated to fill gaps in our public safety force. And this measure seeks to solidify these partnerships that already exist. I'd like to speak a little bit on how this bill came to be. So after meeting with the Department of Parks and Recreation and then meeting with the Department of Agriculture Conservation Officers, who shared that they were all a part of this public safety task force during the pandemic, they were helping to enforce laws throughout this time in our public spaces. They were really supporting each other and leaning on each other throughout the pandemic. They realized that many of these law enforcement agencies, a part of this task force, were also patrolling the AFC or the alcohol-free zones. They would stop by the parks to see who was in them late at night or patrol the seashore that many of our parks have. And they'd see violations in the park, but they were not authorized to cite any of these violations that they were witnessing. So we came up with this policy proposal, and I'm certainly looking forward to being able to give our law enforcement officers, especially the Department of Parks and Recreation's Park Patrol Division, a little more support. I know we've been talking about it in many different ways, such as the Park Patrol Reservist Program. And this is just another added layer of support to ensure public safety in our parks. So under bill 95, alcohol-free zones will be enforced by trained peace officers from the following agencies: the Department of Parks and Recreation, the Guam Police Department, the Guam Fire Department, Guam Airport Police, Guam Port Authority Police, Department of Corrections, Department of Youth Affairs, Department of Agriculture, Guam Customs and Quarantine Agency, Office of the Attorney General, and Guam Marshals and Judiciary Probation Officers. Again, these are the post-certified law enforcement officers. And I want to thank my colleagues who have signed on to co-sponsor this bill, namely, Senator Turloughy, Senator Rogel, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Senator Nelson, Senator Ada, Senator Moylan, Senator Blas, and Senator Duennius. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion to add Senator Titegley and Senator Brown as co-sponsors as well. And I'm sorry, I'd also like to add Senator Joe Sin Augustin.
On the motion to amend, are there any objections? There are no objections, amendment passes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I look forward to any discussion on the bill today.
On the motion to place bill 95-36 LS on the third reading file, are there any members wishing to speak? Senator Torres, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The opening statement actually highlighted some of the points that I thought were very important to raise about the necessity to have this broader enforcement of alcohol-free zones across Guam. You know, it is true that this pandemic over the past year and a half has showed what the community involvement, the depth, the breadth of the community involvement and how effective it can be in not only drawing a greater awareness to being law-abiding and cooperative, but also it also has the ability to deter people from going on the wayside. One of the luxuries that we have on Guam is our park system, the ability to go outside and enjoy nature at any day of the year, weather permitting, of course. Today, being rainy, it might deter us from being there, but it won't prohibit us from still enjoying the outdoors. But having this kind of cooperative effort where we team up with peace officers who are already trained in law enforcement and how to deal with people in the community, it's so important right now to broaden, I think, that involvement. So I, the author brings up a very good point about how we have seen over this time how effective it has been when we have the different agencies come together. And it's also a very good demonstration of how Guam can maximize its resources for the good of the community. But also with greater presence is a greater degree of deterrence, I think, for people to abuse substances in public places. And that's what this bill, I think, helps with is deterring people now that we know that there are more peace officers that will be on board to help enforce our alcohol-free zones. People perhaps may be a little more cognizant of being law-abiding in those public spaces. So I just want to commend the author and the co-authors for introducing this measure. While it might seem like a small measure, I think that the impact that it has to the quality of life and to the enjoyment of public spaces on Guam will certainly be enhanced. And so I also rise in support of this bill. And I just think it's a very good practical idea at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Are there any other members wishing to speak on bill 95-36? Speaker Turloughy, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just wanted to rise to say that I support this bill and I actually, I really appreciate this bill. It's seemingly simple, but it's huge and it's going to make a big impact, I'm hoping. And especially because of the collaboration that the author received prior to the introduction of the bill, that it was these peace officers themselves that had been working together and recognized the issues and are able to help us, to help them. I am very much hoping that this is the type of collaboration that we will see for all aspects of our parks, our preserves, our, those areas, especially the agricultural conservation officers and their duties as well, where we've got so few officers compared to the amount of area that they are required to cover and the amount of mandates that they and the police departments are required to cover. And, you know, they've all got their mandates, they're separate. And so we've seen even in the same beaches, we can have different mandates enforced by different people. And so I'm hoping that this will further lead to a further collaboration of all of those other mandates as well, and that we can see that in one beach or park that it doesn't require that you have a certain type of officer present there at that moment when there are only two tasks to cover the entire island, and that we could have any type of these peace officers available in those parks to help enforce these mandates. And so I very much appreciate the intent of this bill. I hope that it's going to give us the results that are intended and that these peace officers will continue to do the good work that they do and to collaborate. Sizouls Masi, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Speaker. Are there any of the members that would like to speak on this measure? Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I certainly concur with all the previous speakers and certainly our main sponsor, Senator Shelton, for introducing this legislation. I think it addresses certainly a sentiment I think a lot of our people in this community feel is about the sense of being safe. And definitely, we want to see more participation of our community out in our parks around the island. And, you know, it's unfortunate, I hope in the budget process, while I'm not crazy about raising a lot of other things in terms of cost to this government, I certainly want to see some more support go to the Department of Parks and Recreation and to the two park rangers that are literally out there by themselves trying to address enforcement with regards to these requirements and also just give our residents a sense of comfort, a sense of safety that there is, that presence at these particular parks so that they can relax and enjoy themselves. It's unfortunate that we have, while we definitely in some areas throw millions of dollars to one problem, sometimes we don't even throw a few pennies to others that really directly impact the community, that our people can literally feel the difference when they go out there to the parks, be it something as big as going down to Tumon to the Epa Beach Park there, or smaller parks in the communities and in the villages that we have around the island. Expanding the jurisdiction of our peace officers to be able to address enforcement so that if, and when these cases do go to court, the question of jurisdiction doesn't get raised as it has in some cases with regards to law enforcement between the airport police, port police, and the Guam Police Department. I think we see a lot of good in this. Also recently, we saw the launching of the Toka app that allows members of our community, when they do see violations, to be able to directly report that so that the respective law enforcement or government agencies are able to respond to address some of these violations rather quickly. I mean, they can't be everywhere, of course. And certainly as we expand our capabilities, as we have more eyes and ears out in the community that can bring these issues to light so corrective action can be addressed, and more importantly, just the safety and welfare of our community, of our families and of our children that are out there wanting to enjoy the parks. I think we all see the importance of being able to have that presence, especially nowadays with our technology. I know we'll go back and debate the issue with regards to the Guam Telephone Authority, but I think we recognize the value and importance now with modern communication and technology and the advantages that that can bring to help put those eyes and ears out there in the community to address compliance and enforcement action if necessary. So I certainly rise in support, but do want to note, while there are other things in the budget, probably I'm not crazy about increasing, especially during a time of uncertainty. I definitely want to see more support go to our conservation officers. I mean, when we whittle down these operations to their almost dysfunctional, in areas where our people really want to see that presence and really want to have that sense of comfort, we're not doing our jobs if we don't do that. So I certainly hope that that issue this budget year can be addressed to support these officers that are out there protecting us in the community. We look at the additional layer of the peace officers in the community as the other layer. But at the foundation of all this, we definitely also want to ensure that we have basic capabilities of our officers out there to be able to do their job and provide safety among themselves even when they're responding. It's very hard for one park ranger, one conservation officer to do all these things on their own and not have the backup they need within their operations to address that. So once again, I rise in support of this bill, and thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Are there any other members that would like to speak on behalf of this measure? Senator Titegley, you're recognized.
Sizouls Masi, Madam Speaker, and good morning to my colleagues and to those who are listening. Madam Speaker, I'd like to thank the author for including me as a co-sponsor of bill 95-36, an important bill that allows additional peace officers to be included in giving citations in these areas, which is very important. I think my colleagues, all my colleagues who spoke before me elaborated on the importance and that this bill would add to the safety of our community, especially in areas where you find more families now wanting to go to park areas where alcohol is not consumed because of that reason. They don't want to have to run into trouble or anyone, you know, binge drinking out there and have to deal with that. So I think that our community is going to be more comforted to know that there are now more peace officers out there that will be monitoring these areas to do so. But one of the important areas in this legislation is that the fines and penalties imposed by those will be deposited into the Public Recreational Service Fund, which was created specifically for parks and recreation. We all know that with only two peace rangers out there, park rangers out there, it's desperate need of additional with all the parks that we have on the island, not just the alcohol-free zones, but all the parks, that this may provide some kind of funding source, you know, for them. And I hope that during the budget hearing, that we will consider, you know, this might not generate enough revenue to add in the additional park rangers that they need, at least three more, if anything, that we can do that during the budget hearing. But this is a good start, Madam Speaker. And again, I'd like to thank the author for including me as a co-sponsor. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Titegley. Are there any other members wishing to speak on behalf of this measure? Okay, seeing that there are no other members wishing to speak, I would like to invite the sponsor to close.
Sizouls Masi, Madam Speaker. I want to thank our partners at the Department of Parks and Recreation, their Park Patrol Division, who continue to do their best work to keep our parks safe and clean, for our community to enjoy. And I want to thank all other peace officers who are always ready to step in when they are called to serve. And I agree with our colleagues here on the floor today that we must invest more into our Department of Parks and Recreation and our other law enforcement agency. And this bill simply highlights the help that they need. And despite their limited resources, they have done their best to ensure that our parks and our community remain safe for all of our community to enjoy. And as the island returns to normalcy, the maintenance and safety of our public parks lie at the heart of our recovery efforts. I think bill 95 will augment the workforce capable of enforcing our rules and will dramatically increase public safety to keep our parks intact so that our parks continue to be a place of enjoyment for the people of Guam. And with that, Madam Speaker, I wish to also add as co-sponsors to the bill Senator Mary Torres and Speaker Theresa Turloughy.
On the motion to amend to add the co-sponsors, are there any objections? Seeing that there are no objections, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I move to place bill number 95-36 COR as amended by the committee and further amended on the floor into the voting file.
On the motion to move 95-36 to the third reading file, are there any objections? Seeing that there are no objections, motion carries. Speaker Turloughy, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to make a motion, notwithstanding the rules, to go back to motions for the purpose of placing the nomination of Alberto Tolentino as Judge of Superior Court of Guam on the agenda.
On the motion to go back to motions, are there any objections? Okay, no objections, we are now in motions. Speaker Turloughy, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move to place a nomination of Alberto E. Tolentino to serve as Judge Superior Court of Guam on the voting file. I'd just like to speak briefly on that motion.
Sorry, Senator Titegley, you have a point of inquiry or a point of information?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I just wanted to be able to, if we're still in motions, to motion to place some bills on the session agenda that's already been uploaded on the website. So I just didn't want to miss that opportunity.
Yes, thank you, Senator Titegley. We will entertain that afterwards.
Thank you.
Speaker Turloughy?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So on the, on the motion to put the nomination or to confirm the nomination of Attorney Alberto E. Tolentino to serve as Judge Superior Court of Guam, Alberto E. Tolentino, a squire, was appointed by the governor to serve as judge on March 13, 2021, to fill the vacancy left by the retirement of Judge Anita Sacola. We have conducted, the Committee on Justice has conducted investigative background. We have prepared the committee report that has been and voted to confirm by the committee. And we have, of course, had a hearing on this on July 16, 2021. All the testimony that was during the public hearing was in favor of the nominee, and in fact, he really received stellar commendations from his colleagues, from coworkers, from different sectors of the community. And I was, I'm very proud to report his confirmation out for the body. Judge Tolentino has a, well, to be, soon to be Judge Tolentino, has served previously as a magistrate in the Superior Court of Guam. And so he has experience following the judicial code of conduct, being held to those very high standards. He's actually been serving as the ethics prosecutor for the Committee on Ethics for the Guam Bar for many years, and I think has done a very good job of keeping lawyers accountable and also helping us to shepherd new rules and regulations governing the practice of law. He has also served as an attorney general, as a prosecutor in his early years of his career. He served in private practice, and so he has a wealth of experience. But most notable, I thought, from the testimony and background was that almost all of those who have testified publicly have said that he exhibits the grace and the disposition of a judge, or what we want to see in judges, someone who will listen, someone who will abide by the rules, someone who will be patient and fair, and that his demeanor is, especially his patient demeanor, I guess, and compassionate demeanor. I think those would be, you know, great attributes to the bench. I think he has developed a, or he has shown a work ethic that will serve us well on the bench and a dedication to the people of Guam as well, Madam Speaker. So I asked my colleagues to support me in the confirmation and support him in his confirmation today, and Sizouls Masi.
Sizouls Masi, Speaker. Are there any members that would like to speak? Senator Duennius, you're recognized.
Sizouls Masi, Madam Speaker. Thank you for the opportunity to rise in support of the nomination of Judge Tolentino, soon to be judge. Unfortunately, during the public hearing, I wasn't able to attend. I had another matter to attend to. But I watched the recording very diligently. And as I watched numerous members, esteemed members of our community come forward to express their support, what was a recurring theme from the members who came to speak on his behalf was his temperament, his experience, and really just the overall integrity that the gentleman possesses. That was very evident to me. He was asked some questions that I thought, you know, he handled very well in terms of particularly how he would work as a judge. He discussed how his experience now as the ethics prosecutor and also as a former referee, that he really has garnered a great deal of experience. He spoke to using the resources of the courts. When asked at one point, particularly on, you know, judges' experience and some of their in-depth knowledge or maybe not in-depth knowledge of cases before them, he was very clear that first of all, his responsibility is to do his research of the cases that come before him, but that it is the officers of the court that come before him to make their case and, of course, how he instructs the jury and others to deliberate. That all spoke to just solid wisdom. There was no, there was no overreaching of, oh, well, I'm really experienced in this or the like. It was, I understand the grasp and the gravity of the decisions that I will be rendering, instructions that I will be giving. be rendering, instructions that I will be giving, and the usefulness of all the tools available to me to be able to carry out the duty. That came through very clear. And so with that, Madam Speaker, I think most definitely Mr. Tolentino is well-suited for the job, and I look forward to voting in the affirmative for his confirmation. Sisus Mossi.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Are there any other members wishing to speak on the nomination of Attorney Alberto E. Tolentino to serve as Superior Court Judge of Guam? Senator Brown, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Certainly want to speak in support of soon-to-be Judge Tolentino's appointment to serve as a judge in the Superior Court of Guam. I did have the opportunity to attend the hearing, and also, of course, as a member of the committee, review the information documents provided, and certainly, I mean, he was asked some tough questions, and deservedly so, as should any nominee to sit in the Supreme Court, the Superior Court of Guam. We certainly would have an expectation that they live their lives in a manner that's responsible to this community and conduct themselves appropriately. That is always the hope, it's not always the case, but always the hope. I think one good thing that needs to be noted, and certainly in my time, I've had the opportunity to review a number of judicial appointments to the bench, and certainly, you know, a number of them now have had many, many years of experience in serving the people of Guam. The position that Mr. Tolentino would fill, obviously, is the position that was vacated by the previous Judge Sacola, who many of us would have to agree is one of the toughest judges that we've seen, in a very good way, in terms of the service that she provided for many years, and the vast experience also she brought to the court, and the straightforward manner that she had in delivering justice within this community. Fortunately, I very seldom had to appear before these judges on anything other than my official duties in the job that I had to provide, and not at a personal level. But I think one thing that Mr. Tolentino brings to the table is experience. Not every judicial appointee has that. Actual court experience and the variety of work that he's done, certainly as an ethics prosecutor and other positions that he's held in this government at the Attorney General's Office, I think having that vast amount of experience and bringing that to the table, including just his years, are very positive things, because not everyone that has sat in these positions in this community have had that vast array of experience and years of experience that they bring to the table. So I certainly wish him well. I mean, the task is big. Obviously, there's a lot of issues in this community that are requiring the attention of our judiciary. You know, our people expect justice, and gosh, it's a very time-consuming and very expensive process, but I'll leave that for another discussion. So I certainly wish him well. I think we have great expectations of him, and I'm sure he has great expectations of himself, and I appreciate the time he took as well. In his testimony, I think it's difficult to ever be put on the spotlight where your whole life is brought up for review. And not everyone gets that opportunity either, to have people in your community, your contemporaries, your friends, your family, to come forward and be able to speak in terms of your character, because obviously, we've had those that have served in the position not always lived up to those expectations. But I'm sure with his years of experience, he'll bring that to the table and certainly be there to administer justice to our people, which is what we expect of him. With that, Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to speak in favor of his nomination.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Taitigui, you're recognized.
Sisus Mossi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of the nomination of Alberto Tolentino. I greatly, first, I'd like to give my thanks to the Speaker's Office that did the research and investigation first for this nomination. It was a lot of work that the staff had to do to investigate this individual, and every aspect and under every stone, and even additional information was brought out even after the report was handed to us to review, so I'd like to thank the staff of the Speaker's Office for their hard work in doing something like this, because usually, it's turned over to an agency, an investigation agency, and unfortunately, there is no longer an agency on this island, so it carried a lot of work, a lot of research. And speaking of research, Madam Speaker, one of the things we asked Judge Tolentino is his ability to research subject matters he's unfamiliar with, and how he went about, you know, doing that, and who he would seek for additional information. And I was pleasantly surprised to know that, that was one of his favorite things to do, you know, sitting on the bench as a magistrate judge, was the research, and he really enjoyed that. I attended the public hearing, Madam Speaker, and, you know, when you're sitting in front of somebody and you look in their eyes and know their enthusiasm, I mean, he definitely had that. He looked at trying to be fair, he was definitely humble, a humble individual. So I just wanted to say that I have confidence in his ability to sit as a judge. I think he will do a fair job, do his due diligence. Madam Speaker, it was brought also to my attention some issues on addressing certain ethics complaints that was brought before him, and I had the ability to read those documents, and also found that in his response, that he was very thorough, very thorough, citing other, citing other laws, and being very precise on what is current law, but then had this demeanor, even in his writing, to be very calm, cool, and collective in expressing those concerns. And actually, to tell you the truth, the way he let that, if the person was wrong, you could tell he let them down easy, not being so stern about it. He's definitely a humble man. So I greatly appreciate the opportunity, Madam Speaker, to speak on his behalf and his support, giving my support to his nomination to sit as a judge. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Taitigui. Are there any other members wishing to speak? Seeing that there are no other members, I would like to invite the chair to close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. A nomination for a Superior Court Judge is a lifelong appointment with a retention vote every seven years. It's like a confidence vote, but they do have to go through that every seven years, and otherwise, so far, we've had no judge been removed by a retention vote, and so for practical purposes, these are lifelong appointments, there is no other check or balance on them except for the voting, the voters of Guam. But I do want to thank my colleagues for being very diligent, attending the public hearing, reviewing the files, and all the testimony and the records. Because of Attorney Tolentino's breadth and years of experience, he has been part of controversies and complaints, and even his actions on behalf of the Ethics Committee are sometimes controversial, and there continue to be some controversies to today. And so we have had to weigh those, we've had to look at those, and we've had to, you know, we're here today to deliberate, you know, that despite those, do we have the confidence, and are we satisfied with the evidence as to his character and his ability to rise to the challenge of this position? And I want to say, yes, I am going to vote in the affirmative on his nomination. I support him to be in this lifelong position, subject to the retention vote of voters, and that I have a lot of hope that he will bring to the judiciary renewed, just because, you know, we're probably the same age, or he's a little older even, but just because of this fresh appointment, that he will bring a renewed sense of commitment to justice. They are the leaders in a justice system on Guam, and so we have great hopes for the judiciary and that they, and that his contributions to it will indeed help the people of Guam, and always, always be centered around justice and the people of Guam, and that we will have trust in the judiciary. I think that's the most important part that we need in this type of system. And so with that, Madam Speaker, I thank my colleagues again, and I congratulate to our nominee, Alberto Tolentino. Sisus Mossi.
Thank you, Speaker Terlai. On the motion to place the nomination of Attorney Alberto E. Tolentino to serve as Judge of the Superior Court of Guam to the voting file, are there any objections? Seeing no objections, motion carries. Senator Taitigui, you're recognized.
Sisus Mossi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I'd like to place the following bills on the session agenda, which have met the requirements of publication notices based on Public Law 36-34, and I'd like to place on the second, if I may, I could probably just go through each bill, there's five bills here. Please do them one by one, yes. Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the first bill placed in the second reading file is Bill Number 117-36COR, an act to amend 403K of Chapter 4, Title 1, Guam Code Annotated, relative to changing the official name of the municipality of Aguej to its name in the Chamor language, namely, Haugej.
Bill 117-36?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
All right. On the motion to place Bill 117-36 on the agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
The next bill, Madam Speaker, is Bill Number 118-36COR, an act to amend 403J of Chapter 4, Title 1, Guam Code Annotated, relative to changing the official name of the municipality of Yumatic to the name in its Chamor language, namely, Humatec.
On the motion to place Bill 118-36 onto the session agenda, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries.
Next bill is Bill 119-36COR, an act to amend 403I of Chapter 4, Title 1, Guam Code Annotated, relative to changing the official name of the municipality of Mariso to its name in the Chamor language, namely, Malasu.
On the motion to place Bill 119-36 on the session agenda, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries.
Bill 4 is Bill Number 125-36COR, an act to amend 403I of Chapter 4, Title 1, Guam Code Annotated, relative to changing the official name of the municipality of Santa Rita to its name in the Chamor language, namely, Santa Rita.
Could you repeat the number?
The bill number is 125-36.
On the motion to place Bill Number 125-36COR on the session agenda, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries.
And Madam Speaker, my last bill to place in the second reading file is Bill Number 126-36COR, an act to amend 403G of Chapter 4, Title 1, Guam Code Annotated, relative to changing the official name of the municipality of Talofofo to the name in its, in the Chamor language, namely, Talofofo.
On the motion to place Bill Number 126-36 on the session agenda, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Perez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wish to place the nomination of Wayne W. Bigler, a member, Board of Directors of Guam Environmental Protection Agency, on the session, on the voting file. Sorry, on the session agenda.
Can you repeat the name?
Wayne W. Bigler.
On the motion to place the nomination of Wayne Bigler on the session agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Perez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wish to place, or make the motion to place Maria M. Dunn, member, Sports Tourism Representative of the Guam Unarmed Combat Commission, on the session agenda.
On the motion to place the nomination of Maria Dunn on the session agenda, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. We are now in legislative concurrence. Senator Perez, if you would mind making the motions to place those nominations to the voting file.
Thank you, Speaker. I wish to place the nomination of Wayne W. Bigler, member of the Board of Directors of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency, in the voting file.
On that motion, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries.
I would also like to make the motion to place the nomination of Maria M. Dunn, member, Sports Tourism Representative, on the Guam Unarmed Combat Commission, in the voting file.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We are proceeding back to second reading. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I move to pass on file Bill Number 83-36COR.
On the motion to pass on file, Bill Number 83-36COR, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, Bill Number 83-36 is passed on file. We now resume with Bill Number 36-36COR on second reading. When we left off, we were with Senator Taitigui, and on a motion made by Senator Duñez.
Sisus Mossi, Madam Speaker, I just...
Senator Taitigui, I understand you want to make one point before we move on.
I'm sorry, Madam Speaker. I jumped the gun on that one. Thank you so much. Madam Speaker, I just wanted to clarify something that was in the PDN this morning, and after doing my research, I just wanted to make a public correction, and it was the PD Chamor Land Trust contract, and in there, I stated that the contract for the PD and Chamor Land Trust was at $5,000 per month and about $60,000 per year. And Madam Speaker, I stand corrected, that is not true. Actually, it's 5,000 per year for that contract, only 5,000 per year between the PD station, landing station, and Chamor Land Trust. That's it, Madam Speaker. I just wanted to make that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Duñez, you're recognized.
Sisus Mossi, Madam Speaker. After some discussion offline, at this time, I'd like to move to withdraw the current amendment under discussion.
On the motion to withdraw the amendment by Senator Duñez, is there any objection to that motion? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries.
Sisus Mossi, Madam Speaker.
That would mean, Senator Duñez, you still have the floor on the bill?
It's a great bill, and I'll be voting for it. Beba Guam.
On the bill, is there any other senator who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Perez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I know it's been said previously before, that, you know, Guam is a strategic location for other reasons, one being the hub for telecommunications, and that it is an untapped potential, and this bill does pave the way forward in making sure that that is a reality. I was at the public hearing when this bill was heard, and one of the concerns that came up was the environmental concerns, and I'm really glad to see that this bill has evolved to include one of the most stringent, I guess, checks to make sure that the environmental concerns are properly vetted, and that being federal contingency, and bringing in the federal partners such as NOAA and others to ensure that we... and others to ensure that we, that the protection of our coral reefs are at the, one of the ultimate priorities. And I just want to also point out that in the hearing, one of the things that was mentioned was, and there was a comparison, a comparison done between the PD landing site and this landing site. And some of the physical features that were highlighted that were, make it a suitable site. So in the PD site, it was mentioned some of the physical features there was that it's a sandy floor, not a lot of wave action. Comparatively, this site actually shows, it doesn't seem to have that same features. It's, there's a hard substrate which corals like to develop on. There's a lot of wave action, so it deters the Crown of Thorns, which is a predator of corals. And so, you know, having, and the other thing that was mentioned was a spot zoning. And, you know, I think when we're looking at development and, you know, it was said earlier that this could be a template, right? This could be a template for future development of undersea cables. And, you know, I've always been a proponent of economic development tied with environmental protections. And, you know, I think that if we have the proper vetting, we can ensure that this takes place. And I do appreciate a lot of the work that has gone into the evolution of this bill to ensure that the public trust is protected, that the environment is, and the community is incorporated into overseeing this project. I do hope that should BSP and other federal partners see this as going to irreparably harm our natural resources, that they will step in and say, this is not the proper site. And so I do trust these partners to say that. And I know that in the testimony, there were 10 miles, basically, it was said that there were 10 miles of coast that could potentially be used as a site. And that if we can use those other sites versus one that could irreparably harm our coral reefs, I would like to, you know, encourage that versus, you know, compromising something so valuable and precious. So, yeah, again, you know, we want to make sure that if this is the template for the future development, that we want to make sure that our environmental protections is just as important and prioritized.
Sidozmasi, Senator, on Bill Number 36-36, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the bill? On the bill?
Anyone wishing to speak on Bill Number 36-36? Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. You know, just certainly to follow up on the comments made by our colleague Senator Sabina with regards to this bill. I know it's gone through some changes with, from the original introduction to certainly where we are today to provide a bill that hopefully will get the support of the majority of the members of our body. I think it points out some very important issues that need to be addressed as we move forward. And certainly in the new age that we live in of telecommunications, where literally this is something that we hold in the palm of our hand every day a number of times in a single day. We also want to make sure that our natural resources are protected. And certainly, just by passing this in Guam Legislature, this is not going to remove the responsibility of the Telephone Authority and their respective contractors to address the environmental requirements that are going to come with regards to laying this cable and also the responsibility for maintaining it. I'm sure after our most recent situation that we've seen with the solar farm at Marbo, I'm hoping all responsible contractors that work for these companies are going to want to ensure that the environmental issues are properly addressed. Another factor that needs to be looked at, and certainly as we compare, and Senator Telotai DeGui had to discuss that a little earlier, to compare this agreement that the legislature is looking at addressing at this point with regards to this bill, is the amount that will be contributed back to the government and to the Chamor Land Trust Commission in particular to address what we know are very needed requirements of infrastructure with regards to the leases that we've hoped for so many years would be provided to our people. This particular bill, yes, I agree. I hope it does set a template with regards to the amounts and how we determine what those charges will be so that there is a tremendous benefit that can be received as a result of these leases. I hope that this is something that the land trust looks at. I'm assuming the reason that this bill's before the legislature is because we are extending the lease time from what is 21 years, I guess it would be allowed in the current statute, to 25 years for that period of time for the lease to occur. I assume that's the reason why we're interjecting in what something otherwise would be addressed by the Chamor Land Trust Commission. But it does bring to light the issue overall with regards to Chamor Land Trust leases. And I'm sure again, in another day and another time, that that's something that we need to further discuss to ensure that the land trust is maximizing its opportunities, to ensure that on its commercial properties that are being leased out, that it is receiving the maximum benefits financially so that funds can be provided to address what we had all hoped to see quite some time ago and what the forefathers that actually put this legislation in place wanted to see, to ensure that the revenues could come in. That was the whole purpose of these commercially leased properties, was to have revenues to come into the land trust to address these needs for infrastructure so that families could develop either their homes on a residential lot or of course, with regards to agricultural, to be able to get the water and other resources that they need to do the farming. So I think those are important steps forward. I appreciate the efforts certainly that have been put forward as well by our speaker in working with this legislation to provide us and the members of this body and our community with legislation that would be more palatable and agreeable, to ensure that our key concerns were addressed with regards to the environmental requirements as well as ensuring that the land trust would receive what we would consider a substantial amount of contribution from the telecommunications company to pay these fees and especially to address almost every line that will be installed now. There'd be a financial benefit for every additional line that will be installed with regards to this project. So I know a lot of time and effort has been put forth. I mean, there's a lot of concern, a lot of controversy. But fortunately, we're at a stage now where we can look at a piece of legislation that would be more agreeable to most of us so that we can actually support this process and move forward, recognizing and understanding that, you know, as with all infrastructure, it has to be maintained, it has to be upgraded, it has to be reproved, and in some cases, it has to be replaced. We've come very comfortable now to having the convenience, literally, at our fingertips to be able to communicate anywhere, be it on Guam or throughout the world. But that infrastructure does require maintenance. And at the end of the day, we want to ensure that this is an agreement that's beneficial certainly to our people and beneficial to the Guam Telephone Authority and any other telecommunications contractor that comes before this body that is seeking our assistance. And in this case in particular, to be able to extend the lease time from 21 to 25 years. So with that, Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. Anyone wishing to speak on Bill Number 36-36? On the bill, Senator Rigel, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just rise in support of the measure. I think it's a good bill, and I'd like to commend everyone who worked on it, including the committee chair for working on it and reporting on an amended bill that I believe is a much better deal for the Chamor Land Trust Commission and ultimately, a much better deal for the people of Guam. So I just rise in support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Rigel. Anyone else on Bill Number 36-36? On the bill? Speaker Trelawney, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on Bill Number 36-36, substituted by the committee. I do believe we on Guam, through various efforts, have tried to put evidence that we recognize the importance of high-speed fiber optic telecommunications cables and our enhanced connection capability to the future growth of Guam's economy, the potential for increased investment, the potential for diversifying our economic efforts, especially highlighted during the pandemic. Of course, our connectivity to the rest of the world. And I'd also like to acknowledge the decades of challenges that have plagued the CLTC in trying to get the people of Guam into residential and agricultural leases due to a lack of infrastructure and a lack of funding. It is my hope with this bill that we will create a baseline for license agreements for submerged lands moving forward. That is more in line with the global market and that will protect the people of Guam and the beneficiaries of the Chamor Land Trust. And that our goal is to really ensure that this is the year, this is the time that the Chamor Land Trust is going to be able to bring in the needed infrastructure so that we can see the reality of what the trust was intended to do. And that after decades, with the waiting list that they still continue to have, I think the last numbers they showed us, there were 11,000 or 11,000 plus who had applied, and there were only about 2,600 that had been given leases so far. So that's the reality of our situation. So I very much appreciate the sponsor and my colleagues and their support of this measure and its benefits that it would bring to the Chamor Land Trust and in turn, to the people of Guam as well. This bill is, it's a little bit different. I think it's a little bit out of the box. It will move Guam forward tremendously, as it should be. However, this bill is not perfect by any means. It is not, as some of my colleagues previously spoke about, it is not the ideal situation for Guam either, right? It's a better deal, but it's not the ideal situation. Because ideally, we were one of those cities who was going to take advantage of these high-speed internets here, locally, in creating jobs, in creating that technological hub, you know, and the different industries that are attracted to those high speeds as we see in other cities such as Queensland and Singapore, where they have invested in that type of infrastructure. And that was the hope, I know, of the task force created regarding submerged cables. And that we still have hope for this task force that we, Anguila, that they're going to come up with a true concrete plan as to how we can more benefit from these fiber optic cables running through Guam. And so we have a delicate balance here, and, you know, that's our dream goal. That's, we know how to diversify our economy in that way. That is not at all what this bill does. This bill just allows the cables to run through Guam at a certain point. And so we're not there yet, and we have a lot of work to do. And I just want to acknowledge that. And the other thing is that, but while we are, you know, seeing the feasibility of doing that here on Guam and creating that type of technological hub here, that, you know, we continue to take advantage as much as possible of our situation, our location, of course, geographically, and our United States rule of law that is here in the territory. The, so what we're doing here in this bill is we're identifying very particulars. So the bill goes beyond what Chamor Land Trust was able to do under its current commercial licensing laws. And that was, they were prescribed to a certain term of years. And this bill would exceed those, that term. And that's why legislative approval was necessary. It would also specify the location, which is Lu Peng Bay, that these cables are going to, that we are authorizing the cables to come through for the submerged, in the submerged lands. But it also bypasses from the other, some of the other parts of Chamor Land Trust's commercial lease regularities such as competitive bidding. And I just wanted to make note of that because it was our findings during the committee testimony after the hearing and examining the way that we come to these. It's so complex here on Guam because these cables, while we can say, we can, might be able to compete us to, you know, this one spot for cables, but they have to land. And so we cannot necessarily, unless we want to control the land parts as well. And so either we come up with a package, like they have done in other cities, of land and submerged. Otherwise, I think we have to bypass that type of competitive process just for now until we come up with that type of a system where we include the land. Otherwise, these individual companies, they have to come up with the land themselves. And this, this type of bill and the Chamor Land Trust's authority only can prescribe for the submerged part of it. The compensation in the substitute bill is, it's a new structure. It require, it puts the bill back to the Chamor Land Trust as opposed to under a new negotiation with the governor and increases the amount that they had been previously discussing to what will be a one-time $100,000 landing fee per cable system and a $100,000 in annual license fees per cable system with a 2% annual escalation. And it is, the term is 25 years with two five-year options. Another change that was made to this bill is that the fees will go to the Chamor Land Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund. The Chamor Land Trust, I'll be straightforward, had asked that this be go, that these funds go to their operations fund. But the committee instead put the Chamor Land Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund because that is, that fund was supposed to be funding the survey and infrastructure, obviously, for the residential and agricultural lots that the commission has been giving out or needs to give out and can't give out because they're not surveyed. It's like a circular decades of, it's decades in circles is pretty much what we've been doing. And I'm just hoping to get us out of that. And despite the previous legislature's best efforts to put money into this fund, to give the Chamor Land Trust resources, to get these surveys done and put this infrastructure in, some of this money has been taken out by, over the years, huge chunks actually. And that's mind-blowing for us, of course, here today, and infuriating, really. And so that's really the one thing, after this bill's passed, hopefully, if it's passed, that we will be able to further protect against. And that is raids on these special funds that have been dedicated for these very special purposes. Because those before us were not stupid. They were intentionally trying to resolve these problems. Unfortunately, yeah, sometimes our government just, I don't know, implodes on itself in this type of situation. And so we just want to, so the goal here is that this is a large amount of money. Of course, we want it to be managed well. I think we will have to keep close oversight of Chamor Land Trust while it is regrowing, rebuilding itself up. while it is regrowing, rebuilding itself up from pretty much ashes, I have to say. And while it gets enough staff on it onboard to accomplish what it needs to do, while it works with GWA to get this sewer in that will allow it to divide the properties into three times more in some cases, from 75 to 300 lots, if they can bring in sewer. And we can take care of that many more people. And that's why this Survey and Infrastructure Fund is so important to me because it really is the, you know, what do you call it? It's, it's the catch point. If we can't bring in that infrastructure, we might give them a land, a land lease. And we have people who have land leases for years, for decades, who have not been able to set foot on that land or they live in squalor without running water. And I don't ever want to see that. That's why I'm just so very grateful to my colleagues in this legislature that, that we stand united and that, that we are going to resolve those issues at the Chamorro Land Trust. And back to the agreement with the GTA, this particular, I agree. There are, in addition to, you know, the surveying, the infrastructure, we also added in, and technology to these areas of the Chamorro Land Trust as directed by the, the commission itself. The substitute bill also provides for environmental language. I too share the concerns of the previous speakers regarding, you know, a lu peng. This is one of the, we have very few places left that are not preserved or are not off-limits entirely to fishermen. And this is one of them. And so I very much heard the concerns of the Bureau of Statistics and Plan, our coastal management team, and GTA has, I believe, been working diligently with the NOAA, the Army Corps of Engineers, and that they, they will not be able to proceed without permits from any of these areas. They will be, they will have to adjust their plans as necessary to avoid any adverse impacts, hopefully, and that, so that's what we want to see. We don't want to see any adverse impacts, of course, to fishermen and to the people who use this area actively for recreation. I just watched that Pesca Dot film where Arlene says that this is a, this is a cultural area. And I think in our historic preservation, we talk, we talk about cultural landscapes, and this is definitely one of them. We've got the fishing areas and then the areas where the people lived, you know, for centuries. So of course, we want to protect this as much as possible. So I'm hoping that the language in the bill will ensure that and that our government agencies, who are charged with this, will be diligent. And this is very, very much on the top of our minds due to current events. And so, you know, we are putting our trust into these agencies and we, and federal and local authorities, and we hope that they will do their best for the people of Guam. We also ensured that residents will continue to have access to the waters for fishing and recreation. We've put in penalties for late payments, making sure that, you know, what happens in the event of default? What happens when the lease is over to, just to make sure, you know, that we want to give them a little bit of discretion as to, we've given it to the Chamorro Land Trust. If the lease is over and it is more beneficial to keep everything in place, more beneficial to the environment, then they will have that discretion. If it's more beneficial to have it removed by the licensee, then they will, they will be, have that discretion to do that as well. Right now, as the government does not have a consistent policy regarding these submerged land leases, and we've seen even the Chamorro Land Trust go out and try to lease all of its submerged lands, you know, announcing that in one hearing. You know, I think we all recognize that certain lands would be more beneficial to be used for bringing cables in. Certain lands would be more beneficial to be used for aquaculture and certain lands perhaps not anything, or, you know, that different, there are different purposes for the different lands. And so we are hoping that BSP will do what it had promised to do as well, and that is that they are creating a plan for the, you know, coastal zones of Guam and that they will be able to give the Chamorro Land Trust going forward. It's their recommendations as to best placements of these. And that we recognize that here on Guam, we want to continue to attract these cables. We want to continue to be competitive. We want to continue to allow access on different angles, from the different angles around our island so that they can deal with different weather, different, you know, types of needs that they might have, and they can create that redundancy in their field that, that is vital to a healthy industry. We're not able to determine all the lease amounts that are made around the world. Worked very hard trying to do that, just not able to do that on a very wide scale, but on a narrow scale, we were able to see some of those. And so we feel confident that, you know, at this point in Guam's development, that this, you know, improvement in, in the fees is going to, it's fair. And I want to thank GTA because we worked for months with GTA to make sure that we could come to something that was fair, fair for them, fair for Guam as well. And I want to thank them for recognizing that, that we are trying ultimately to be fair to the people of Guam. As was previously discussed, we have various submerged cable leases around the island. They are, they are kind of all over the place. The terms of them, the length, the amounts of compensation that Guam receives, if any, for some of these. And this is something that GTA very much pointed out to me and that I appreciate, is that, you know, they want to be treated fairly and they want us to make sure that going forward, all other companies are going to be treated the same. And so I just want to say that on the record, that I very much appreciate that concern. And I want that to happen for all companies of Guam and for all our submerged licenses going forward, for all the renewals that will, that can occur with some of these that are expiring. And that, so I'd like to ask my colleagues to continue to work with us to make sure that that is, that is how Guam goes forward. In our committee report, we put many of the details of these different leases and, and those types of terms. I know I'm at the end of my time, Madam Speaker. I just want to make sure of whether I put everything on the record that I was hoping to do. We talked about the valuation, the task force that we are waiting for, for continued expansion of this type of industry on Guam. I think at last, they said they would draft an outline for a white paper, and the white paper would feed the narrative for a grant application to fund the required feasibility study. This is a preliminary stages only. And, oh, I'm sorry. Before I go any further, I have a floor amendment. Thank you to the clerks for reminding me. Sorry, this is a floor amendment. It should have been on the drive. It's on page 13, line 9. And it is to add a new section of the bill, and this is to waive a section of the Chamorro Land Trust law. And it says, "The licensed property in this act shall not be subject to" section 75A 122 of chapter 75A and section 75 122 of chapter 75, both of title 21, Guam Code annotated. And this is the Commercial Lease and License Law, which tells the parameters for all the commercial leases. And I just want to ensure my colleagues that I went through every single one of these provisions, and we either included it in as a provision that is required by this act independently or we took it out, or we, or the intention is not to make it applicable to this act, for example, because it, it, we intend for this act to do something different. And let me give you two examples. So one is what I spoke of earlier, that competitive. Right now, they're required to put all leases out for competition. And I just don't think that is feasible under these types of circumstances when you have to join the submerged cable to a terrestrial proportion that the CLTC does not control. And each contractors, or each licensee is going to, looks like, might have to come in with a different proposal unless some other structures developed. Another, another specific term that we want to exclude this bill from conforming with is the requirement that in order for the Chamorro Land Trust to issue commercial leases, it can only issue up to 9% of its inventory in commercial leases. And if they start to include submerged lands as part of that inventory, which they haven't yet, first of all, it would expand their inventory tremendously and allow a lot more commercial lands than I think was originally intended to be leased. It would, and might be far exceed the residential properties that they are able, that, you know, that they've leased so far. And so it's just, and secondly, well, that's primarily it. It's a, we didn't want this to be counted in the part of the 9%. So it wouldn't be counted as part of that. And I think that's, right now, if you ask them their inventory, they don't count these lands in it, and they don't count the 9% based on submerged lands right now. So we wanted that to continue. So that, that's this amendment, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the amendment? The amendment to line 9, page 13 of Bill 36. Do you like to close? Are there any objections to the amendment? Amendment passes. May proceed, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. And I want to thank my colleagues for their patience. And I would, I will close on this bill. I want to thank again the author for introducing this bill, for his determination and patience in ensuring through several terms, actually, that this gets done, the Chamorro Land Trust for their efforts. And although I do believe we will, we will need to ensure that they are fully capable of implementing the terms of this lease. I did receive a letter from them yesterday that says they see no impediment and that they are capable of implementing the terms of this lease. And of course, my colleagues in their support, that we hope that this substitute version creates a proper foundation for submerged cables moving forward until another analysis can be done or another type of structure can be set that strikes a good balance between getting the best value for the Chamorro Land Trust Commission and the people of Guam and staying competitive in the world market for submerged lands. The foundation laid in this bill will prove critical to the development of residential properties for the land trust in the coming years to provide affordable housing and technology and to finally achieve progress for the CLTC that some have given up hope on. And I think this bill will contribute to restoring some of that hope for beneficiaries and, and for our diversification of our economy, Madam Speaker. And again, I want to thank, of course, GTA for their diligence in working with me on this bill and their, their continued work as well to ensure that the process is streamlined as much as possible, that we can take care of these licenses as efficiently as possible going forward with the CLTC and that we can ensure fair value for the people of Guam. Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker, and to my colleagues.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on Bill 36-36? I'd like to invite the author to close on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And to all my colleagues who offered their support towards passing and supporting Bill 36-36. This bill we discussed has seen the light at the end of the tunnel. And it is incumbent that we take the proper step towards passing this legislation in support of our island's hometown carrier, who works hard to ensure we remain connected to the world. In passing the bill, we will provide additional revenue for our CLTC to execute their mandates, not just from GTA, but from all other carriers as well. I appreciate the work the speaker and her committee has performed by producing this substitute. And I urge my colleagues to vote yes on this legislation so we can move forward in building capacity for our island's telecommunication that will keep our island connected to the world. Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker. I'd like to amend the bill just to add cosponsors.
Please proceed.
And I will start with the speaker, Teresa Lai, followed by Senator Chris Duennas, Senator Telo Tidaway, Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes. Then I'm just going to read off all the names as I might, and we have, yes, yourself, Madam Speaker, Senator Amanda Shelton, Senator Clint Rigel, Senator Jim Moilen, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Tony Ada, Senator Frank Blos, and Senator Pito Chalai. I think I've caught everybody else that I need to catch.
On the motion to add all members as cosponsors of the bill? No objection, motion passes. On the motion to place the bill in the voting file?
Yes, if we could, I ask to make the motion that we move it to the voting file, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. On the motion, any objections? Motion passes.
Thank you, Senators. We're now on Bill Number 117-36. Senator Tidaway, you're recognized. You can find this on your drive, colleagues.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I make a motion to place Bill 117-36, COR, an act to amend 403K of chapter 4, title 1, Guam Code Annotated, relative to changing the official name of the municipality of Aguej to its name in the Chamorro language, namely Hagatnya, introduced by myself, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Speaker Teresa Lai, Clint Rigel, Chris Duennas, Anthony Ada, Frank Blos Jr., Joe Sinagastin, Sabina Paris, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, and Jose Pito Chalai to the third reading file for the opportunity to speak on the bill.
Senator, could you just please read the name that we're changing it to again?
Changing it from Aguej to Hoget.
Okay, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And for the opportunity to speak on Bill 117, which is the first of several measures on the month's session agenda that seeks to restore and recognize the names of our villages and their Chamorro names. Madam Speaker, I would like to use this opportunity during our discussion on Bill 117 to speak about our, about our broader effort with all these bills. As a matter of protocol, I will formally and briefly introduce the measures as we get to them. But Bill 117, Madam Speaker, builds upon the work this 36 Guam legislature put forward earlier this year in responding to a call from the residents of Inalahan to finally recognizing their village name by their, recognizing their village by their Chamorro name. Madam Speaker, whether it was by coincidence or some other reason, the commitment made by this legislature to elevate the discussions on our identity as Tano I Chamorro, which involves the restoration and recognition of our villages by their Chamorro. which involves the restoration and recognition of our villages by their Chamorol names, may have inspired the Komishon to begin facilitating discussions at the community level with families and village leaders. Madam Speaker, the Komishon was created in January of 2017 through public law 33-236. Is also mandated to serve as a Komishon to develop, implement, and advise interested parties on a coherent, culturally sound, and historically accurate set of criteria for selecting place names. I thank Mayor Kevin Ceswiko, Vice Mayor Christopher Heron, and the families of Hoget for hosting the Komishon and residents, and the leadership of the other southern villages, including Melesu, Humatek, Santa Rita Sumai, and Talafofo during the first public hearing of the Komishon, which was held on April 13, 2021, at the Hoget Community Center regarding the restoration of Chamorro villages. Madam Speaker, I thank the residents of Hoget and other southern villages for showing up to the public hearing and for collectively expressing support the restoration, of the restoration of the Chamorro village names, and for their shared desire to take these small but important steps in order to reconnect with Guam Chamorro identity. Madam Speaker, on May 5, 2020, your office received an official letter from the Komishon's chairperson, former Senator Hope Kostrovol, informing the legislature, she was pleased to report the recommendations on the naming of the municipalities of the villages by the Komishon. And if I may add, as recognized in Bill 117 and other measures related to this matter, were approved by the full, were approved by the full Komishon on April 29, 2021, pursuant to the public hearing held at Hoget on April 13, 2020, which was well attended, and where all mayors of the southern villages indicated their approval of the name restoration efforts. Madam Speaker, Mayor Ceswiko reiterated in full support of Bill 1117 during a legislative public hearing on June 24, 2021, which for the record reflects the decision made on February 18, 2021 by the majority of members of the Hoget Municipal Planning Council to restore the village Chamorro's name. In closing, Madam Speaker, because this message captures the important work we're doing with Bill 117 and the other village name restoration bills, and the anticipated discussions regarding named places, I would like to read into the record a portion of the Komishon's May 5, 2021 letter informing the legislature of its approval of Chamorro names for Hoget and other southern villages, which reads, "The work of restoring Chamorro place names is a major part of the culture, of our culture heritage and identity. It is a matter of pride and a serious endeavor. Over time, we will build even more pride in our past and protect our future for our children and their children." Madam Speaker, I recognize there are a few voices in our community that share the different opinion on the importance of work we've done during measures such as Bill 117, with some even belittling these efforts and questioning why senators would spend time and energy on restoring Chamorro village names in light of all the other issues facing our island. Madam Speaker, proposals such as Bill 117 is about respecting our history and heritage. It's about recognizing the sacrifices our ancestors made to protect the very resources which, which this and future generations have been blessed. And it's about taking small but meaningful steps going forward if you're serious about preserving, perpetuating, and celebrating our Chamorro language and culture. Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker.
Sidoos Masi, Senator, on Bill number 117-36, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized? Senator Rigel?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just rise in support of this measure. It's another good bill along with the other bills that Senator has introduced regarding naming villages their proper names in Chamorro. And being from down south, having grown up there, I know a lot of people from the various villages in the south. I have a lot of friends from Aguej, and I know that although they use the term Aguej a lot, they also, of course, know the original term is Hoget. And they use that all the time when speaking in the Chamorro language. They use the word Hoget. So I think it's only fitting and only right that we restore the original names of the island's villages, and I support this measure, thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On Bill 117, anyone else like to be recognized? If not, then Senator, you may close. Senator Titegui.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I motion to place Bill 117-36 to the voting file.
On that motion, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. On Bill 118, Senator Titegui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Motion to place Bill 118-36 COR, which is an act to amend 403J of Chapter 4, Title 1, Guam Code Annotated, relative to changing the official name of the municipality of Humatek to its name in the Chamorro language, namely Humatek, introduced by myself, Senator Joanne Brown, Speaker Therese Terlaie, Clint Rigel, Christopher Duennas, V. Anthony Ada, Frank Bloss, Joe Sinagastine, Sabina Flores Paris, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, and Jose Pito Terlaie, and placed in the third reading file for the opportunity to speak on the bill.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity briefly to introduce Bill 1118, which restores the official name, the municipality of Humatek, to this Chamorro name of Humatek. I'd like to thank Mayor Johnny Canata for offering your support for Bill 1118 and for actively engaging in discussions on this matter, specifically during the April 13, 2021, public hearing, the Komishon at the legislature, with the Komishon there, and the legislature's public hearing for Bill 118, which was held on June 24, 2021. I also like to thank Mayor Canata for formally recognizing the decision of his Municipal Planning Council to support Bill 118, which he communicated to me via email, I received on, which I received on July 22, 2021, and which I would like to read into the record. Hoffiday, Senator Titegui, pursuant to your request, please accept this email as confirmation that the Humatic Municipal Council is in support of Bill 118-36 COR, changing the official name of our village from Humatic to Humatek. Biba Humatek. Cementry, Cementry Mayor Johnny A. Canata, municipality of Humatic. With that, Madam Speaker, I'd like to thank the community of Humatek for endorsing Bill 118, and for all they continue to do, such as through the annual Guam History and Chamorro Heritage Day and Mess Chamorro festivities, to help preserve, perpetuate, and celebrate our Chamorro language and culture. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On Bill 118, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized? Senator Rigel?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, I just rise in support of this bill, another good bill that gives the correct name to another village in the south. So I'm happy to support this measure. And it's just interesting to note that it shows how a lot of villages that originally had an H sound in their name, the H was dropped away through misspellings, et cetera. For example, Agania was Hagatnia. Prior to this bill, we had Aguej, which was Hoget, and prior. And this bill is Humatic, which is actually Humatek with the H added in there. So just something I'd like to note out for linguist nerds at home. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On Bill 118-36, any Senator like to be recognized? If not, then Senator, Titegui, you may close.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker, and to my colleague, colleague for those kind words. Also, Madam Speaker, I'd like to place Bill 118-36 COR to the third reading file, for the voting file.
On that motion, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. On Bill 119, Senator Titegui, you are recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to place Bill 119-36 COR in the third reading file. It's an act to amend 403I of Chapter 4, Title 1, Guam Code Annotated, relative to changing the official name of the municipality of Mariso to its name in Chamorro language, namely Melesu. This is introduced by myself, Senator Clint Rigel, Senator Joanne Brown, Speaker Therese Terlaie, Senator Chris Duennas, Senator V. Anthony Ada, Senator Frank Bloss Jr., Senator Joe Sinagastine, Senator Sabina Flores Paris, Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes, and Senator Pito Terlaie, and I would like to speak on the measure.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak briefly on Bill 119, which restores the official name, the municipality of Melesu, Mariso, to its Chamorro language, namely Melesu. I'd like to thank Mayor Ernest Charglaw for offering this support of Bill 119 and for joining his mayoral colleagues in supporting this and other efforts to preserve and perpetuate our Chamorro language, culture, and tradition. Madam Speaker, during the June 24, 2021 legislative public hearing on Bill 119, Mayor Charglaw spoke at length about the meaning of Melesu, its connection to the Manumco season, and how important much blessings from the Lord above have helped to bring families and our community together throughout history, and that the people of Melesu will always take pride as the heart and soul of Guam's fishing industry. I thank Mayor Charglaw for participating in public discussions facilitated by both the legislature and the Komishon, and I'm grateful that his office and the Melesu Municipal Planning Council formally communicated their support for Bill 119 through an email I received on June 26, 2021, which I'd like to read into the record. Wetherson Hoffiday, Senator, on behalf of the Melesu Municipal Planning Council members, I would like to inform you that they are all in support of Bill 119-36 COR, the changing of the official name of the municipality of Mariso to its name in the Chamorro language, namely Melesu. I may acknowledge receipt of this soon email. Thank you, and have a nice day. Respectfully, Lodeta Njoa, Administrative Assistant, Mariso Mayor's Office. Madam Speaker, I thank the community of Melesu for supporting Bill 119 and for doing their part to help preserve, perpetuate, and celebrate the Chamorro language and culture.
Thank you, Senator. On Bill 119, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized? Of course, Senator Rigel, you are recognized regarding the village of Melesu.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Again, just rising in support of this measure, another good bill, restoring the original name of the village. And of course, a little bit biased towards this village in this bill. That's why I like to thank the primary sponsor for allowing me to be the second sponsor on the bill, as my wife, my beautiful wife, Therese, is from the village of Melesu. So I know that this is the word that they actually use to speak about the village when speaking in their own language. And there's a meaning behind it, which the primary sponsor of the bill touched upon. And just to reiterate, it just comes from their tradition of fishing, of a certain type of Manyahak that's referred to as Lesu. And so of course, anyone from down south or anyone who's familiar with people from Melesu know, guaabula lesu, gi melesu. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Anyone else like to be recognized on the bill? If not, Senator Titegui, you may close.
Sidoos Masi, biba melesu. Madam Speaker, I respectfully ask to place Bill 119-36 into the voting file.
On that motion, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. On Bill 125, Senator Titegui, you are recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to place Bill 125-36 COR as amended in the third reading file, introduced by myself, Senator Chris Duennas, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Frank Bloss Jr., Senator Anthony Ada, Speaker Therese Terlaie, Senator Joe Sinagastine, Senator Clint Rigel, Senator Sabina Flores Paris, Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. It's an act to amend 4031 of Chapter 4, Title 1, Guam Code Annotated, relative to changing the official name of the municipality of Santa Rita to its name in Chamorro language, namely Santa Rita/Sumai. And this bill is amended by the committee, Madam Speaker, and placed in the third reading file for the opportunity to speak on it.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity and briefly introduce Bill 125 as amended, which restores the official name of the municipality of Santa Rita to the name, to its name in the Chamorro language, namely Santa Rita/Sumai. I thank Mayor Dale Alvarez supporting Bill 125 and for representing his constituents in the collective desire to have their village name also recognized, Sumai, the original home of those who have had to relocate during the Japanese occupation and to allow for the development of what is now the U.S. Naval Base Guam. Madam Speaker, during the legislative hearing on Bill 125, Mayor Alvarez shared an important piece of history about Sumai, which was that the village was supposed to serve as the new capital of Guam because of the important role it played in Guam's economic and social development and growth prior to World War II. Madam Speaker, although the families of Sumai may not have their lands returned anytime soon, this legislation can and must help ensure we, through the passage of Bill 125, help preserve the memory of the community and the special place they once called home. I thank Mayor Alvarez for participating in the public discussions regarding the restoration of the Chamorro village names. And I thank his office and the Santa Rita Municipal Planning Council for formally communicating their support for Bill 125 through MPC's Resolution 2021-02, which my office received on July 28, 2021. Madam Speaker, I thank you for the opportunity for Santa Rita/Sumai for supporting and for supporting Bill 125 and helping preserve, perpetuate, and celebrate our Chamorro language and culture.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator. Is there anyone who'd like to be recognized on Bill 125? If not, then Senator, you may close on Bill 125.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker, and I humbly ask my colleagues for their support and would like to place Bill 125-36 COR as amended to the voting file.
On that motion to place Bill 125 on the voting, on the third reading, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. Bill 126, Senator Titegui, you are recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker, and my last bill to be spoken on is, Madam Speaker, I motion to place Bill 126-36 COR, which is an act to amend 403G of Chapter 4, Title 1, Guam Code Annotated, relative to changing the official name of the municipality of Talafofo to its name in the Chamorro language, namely Talafofo. It's introduced by myself, Senator Clint Rigel, Senator V. Anthony Ada, Senator Frank Bloss Jr., Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Chris Duennas, Speaker Therese Terlaie, Senator Joe Sinagastine, Senator Sabina Flores Paris, Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. And I'd like to place it on the third reading file for the opportunity to speak on the bill, Madam Speaker.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity again to provide brief comments on Bill 126, which restores the official name of the municipality of Talafofo to its name in the Chamorro language, namely Talafofo. Now, I'd like to spell this, Madam Speaker, for the listening audience. It's spelled T.A.L.O. hyphen F.O. hyphen F.O. I'd like to thank Mayor Vincent Titegui for joining his mayoral colleagues during the June 24, 2021 legislative hearing and for offering support for Bill 126 on behalf of his office and that of the Talafofo Municipal Planning Council. Madam Speaker, during the legislative hearing on Bill 126, Mayor Titegui shared that his support for this proposal is part of the obligation we as a community of Guam have if we are to take to heart the essence of the Inefresi, which in part reads, biba hu proteiti, zani defendi, i hengi, i katura, in linguini, iari, i hamunzon i tano Chamorro. Madam Speaker, I thank Mayor Titegui for helping to remind us of all of the pledges we make at the beginning of each legislative session. Moreover, Madam Speaker, it is my prayer and hope that through Bill 126 and other measures that seek to help restore, preserve, perpetuate, and celebrate the Chamorro identity, that we give true meaning to the words we recite here in the legislative hall, so that this and the generations after us will never forget who we are, where we come from. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On Bill 126, is there any Senator who'd like to be recognized? Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I certainly wanted to speak in favor of this bill and just collectively recognize the efforts of Senator Telo Titegui in working with our Chamorro Komishon, as well as the village mayors, their municipal planning councils, and residents of their village to be able to address not so much changing the names of these villages, but returning them back to what we know as the original names and pronunciation of Talafofo, Hoget, Humatek, Melesu. Hu-Matek, Melesu, Santa Rita, Sumai. While some people think that it's rather insignificant or because, you know, there's many issues that could face the legislature that we should be addressing, that these issues are not as important perhaps, should not be put as a priority on the agenda, but I think every step that we can make and take to essentially restore back to our islands and to our villages our sense of identity and who we are as a community and who we are as a people is very important. It defines who we are, and it brings our history forward for the new generation, the younger generation, who will not know these villages as those of us in our generation grew up, of knowing the pronunciation of our village names that were not the original pronunciations, to restore back our sense of pride in our history and in our people and essentially who we are moving forward. I think it's important to take the time to do that, and I look forward to seeing these village names. You know, when I had the opportunity a few months ago to go down to Inilahan, you know, we're thinking we simply passed a bill to change it from Inirahan to Inilahan, what's the big deal? But, boy, when you were there among the mayor, Tony Chargloff, his municipal planning council, his village residents, the young children that were there to perform, you really had a real sense of pride that we shared in being guests. Certainly Senator Tallo and her family are from that village. It really gave you a sense of Guam in a very good way, and we don't always have the opportunity, Madam Speaker, as you know, to deal with these positive issues every day before the Guam Legislature. But, boy, what a celebration, what a celebration, all the time and effort that they put forth on what some people may think is, oh, very minor, minor change of a name, but what that represents, what that represents to those of us that are descendants of our original Chamoros that occupied Guam thousands of years ago, and to all those that have moved to Guam that see Guam as their home. This is important. It's important to recognize that, and certainly as I make my comments, again, thank you to everyone who's still here in the session hall for the discussion on these bills, and again, to our colleague Senator Tallo for her persistence in moving these issues forward. We look forward to seeing the new village names, not only as we say it, but as we think it, but as we really live it, live our history and who we are and have pride in that. That's something that we need to be very boastful, very boastful about. So with that, thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to comment on this and the other bills that Senator Tallo has brought forth on the legislative floor today. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Anyone else like to be recognized on Bill? Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I applaud the author of this bill and the marathon that she just put us through the last 15 minutes. But, you know, Madam Speaker, I felt obligated and I felt the need and the desire to be able to speak because I want to speak to the importance and the priority that we've placed in this. And I've heard from the community, some people of the community actually complain, for lack of a better term, that we're spending, we're spending time on being able to do this and what is the importance of this thing. My answer to that thing is, if not now, when? Because it has been far too long. You know, as was stated earlier by my good colleague from Ipana, you know, these were, this is a sense of pride for our people, and most especially for the people in the villages that were so aptly named and legislation put forth for them, because it is pride. You know, I remember, I don't want to say back in the day, but there was more so back then than there is now, that there was pride when you came from the different villages. There's a pride when you came from Melesu or Inilahan or Hogget or Santa Rita and Sumai or Talafofo. The Guineans are against Berigada and Zigos and Zonia. For the individual, for the man or the woman who is not in tune with their culture, it doesn't, it sounds like it's senseless. But for people that for the longest time have struggled and continue to persevere to keep their identity, it's meaningful. So, yes, in the midst of many other issues and crises that this body has to deal with, I think this was one of the most appropriate times to be able to do this, because while we're talking about money, we're talking about economy, we're talking about how to save, you know, businesses and families and homes, then we have to also talk about saving our culture and our pride. I'm a proud co-sponsor to all the legislation that was, that the good senator from Tumon had put up, and I stand in full support of not just this measure, but all the other measures that were introduced and that were brought into the third reading for change. But I don't see it as for change, it's for right, it's for now. So with that, Madam Speaker, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to speak not just on the bill, but also in culmination of all the other bills that were introduced by the good senator. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, Senator Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to thank my colleague Senator Titegwe for introducing these measures and also for including me as a co-sponsor, a proud co-sponsor of these measures that we move forward into recognizing the Antigua way of our pronunciation of our villages. But one bill in particular that got my attention was the Santa Rita/Sumai. For the past many years, we have been recognizing Sumai during our memorial services that we have been having, and I think that including Sumai as Santa Rita/Sumai is a significant addition to the recognition of the villages that we have on our island. And I thank the Santa Rita mayor for also bringing that to the attention, so that now when we move forward, it's just like how we say "Asinma ina," you know, "Tumuning Tumon Harmon," now we have that recognition of Santa Rita/Sumai. So again, Madam Speaker, I'd like to thank the co-sponsor, the sponsor of these legislations for not just including me as a co-sponsor, but my other colleagues as well, and I stand in full support of these measures to move forward. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, Senator Perez.
Sisus Massey, Speaker, I stand in full support of these series of measures of indigenizing our villages. This is so important, I think, because it is part of decolonization, where we can see ourselves reflected back, see our identities reflected back in the names that we come across on a daily basis, and it has the power and potential to affect the psyche of our community, to reinforce that this is Guahan, the homeland of the Chamorro people. And when we see it in our names and the naming of our villages, and I hope this can continue to go forward in naming of our rivers, our valleys, our watersheds, when we can connect to the land through the language, it reinforces our cultural identity in a way that hearkens our past and the knowledge and the wisdoms that have passed, been passed down through generations. We are oral culture, and a lot of that language may have, a lot of that wisdom and knowledge may have been fragmented through the years of colonization, but I think the wisdom is retained in the language itself, and this is part of the acts of decolonization, and I stand in full support. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey. On the bill, 126. Senator Titegwe, you may close.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to thank my colleagues who stayed behind enough to know that how important it is on the changing of these names back to, not changing, actually, it's restoring. We're not changing the names, we're restoring it back to its original names, and I greatly appreciate the comments that were made today with regards to the importance of keeping and perpetuating our identity in the Chamorro language and keeping that for the next generation. Madam Speaker, it might be a little bit more difficult as we move towards the central and to move towards the north in getting those names restored back because there have been so many, so much controversy, but I can report to you that the Komission is moving forward. They're continuing to go to the villages in the north and central to discuss the restoring of these names. It may take a little bit longer, but they're not giving up, and that's the hope that we can bring to the people of Guam, that we're not giving up, and this body is not giving up. So with my colleagues' help, Biba Yumatek.
Biba.
Biba Hogget.
Biba.
Biba Melesu.
Biba.
Biba Santa Rita/Sumai.
Biba.
Biba Talafofo.
Biba.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to place Bill 126-36 into the voting file.
On that motion, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. We've concluded with our second reading file. Majority, Assistant Majority Leader Shelton, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I move that we go back to motions.
On the motion to go back to motions, is there any objection?
Notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we go back to motions.
On that motion, any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We're in motions.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Resolution Number 121-36 LS authored by Senator Talina Cruz Nelson, myself, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Speaker Therese M. Terlahi, Senator Joe Sinagastine, Senator Sabina Flores-Perez, Senator James C. Moylan, and Senator Frank F. Blas Jr., relative to respectfully requesting that President Joseph R. Biden Jr. act within his administrative authority to remove the deadline to file a claim with the Foreign Claims Settlement Commission under the Guam World War II Loyalty Recognition Act and to further extend the act's eligibility to the survivors of decedents who had passed away after the initial filing deadline of June 20, 2018 onto the session agenda. And Madam Speaker, just for our colleagues, this resolution was cleared by the Committee on Rules and posted today.
On that motion, Senator, do you have?
Point of information, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this resolution has met the following requirements as publicized based on public law 36-34 for the record.
Thank you for that point of information. On the resolution, on the motion to place the resolution on the agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I move that we recess until tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we are recessed until 10:00 a.m. tomorrow.